Good evening and welcome to Board of Selectmen's meeting. Tonight is August the 20th. If you'll all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to start with our summary of actions, which typically is at the end, but we do have a shellfish workshop, so we'll begin with that. And if I can go through the list, if someone wants to hold an item, item number A would be held. Does anyone want to hold item B? Item C. Item D. Adopt Board -- maybe I should read these. B is discuss Capitol Advisory Committee charge. C is affirm appointment of the town elections officers. D, vote to adopt the Board of Selectmen's five-year strategic plan. E, vote to accept a donation in the amount of $1,500 to the beach donation account for the Ellen T. Mitchell bathhouse. F, request for a wedding permit, Minot Beach. I'm going to hold that. G, approve request for wedding permit, Bristol Beach, 10-6-12. H, approve request for one-day traffic, Parsons Lane, Wacoites. Also with that is, as part of that one day, is a proclamation to name Jane Abbott as the honorary mayor of Woods Hole, pardon me, of Wacoite today. I, approve request for a special event, Jazz Stroll, Queens Byway, on 9/28/12. J, approve temporary construction easement at Chappaquaite Road. K, approve easement, Hayway Road and Old Barnstable Road. L, approve request for one-day liquor license, Woods Hole Historical Society. I'll hold that. M, approve request for special events, Olympic medals celebration, Surf Drive Beach, Walker Street, Pagnoon and Park, and Library Lawn. And that'll be a hold as well. So, not held is A. Pardon me, pardon me, not held is B. C, D, E, G, H, I, J, K.
So moved.
So moved?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. The first one held is appoint two selectmen to the serve in the Capitol Advisory Committee. I did hear from a couple of folks, one after the meeting, Doug Jones, as well as Brent Putnam. Are there any other members of the board who would like to consider being appointed to that committee? There would be actual appointments of the Board of Selectmen. Of course, these will be posted meetings, so any member could, could in fact, attend and give their input at those meetings. So do I have a motion to appoint both Doug Jones and Brent Putnam to the Capitol Advisory Committee?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
So motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Thank you very much for your service. Next is to approve a wedding permit, Minot Beach, on 7/6/13. The only reason I held this is that I just wanted to, this is in next year, I just wanted to make sure that we, if we approve this, that we let them know that the fees could be in fact, different for next year, so that that would be the only thing that I would ask the board to make a motion, if you want to approve that, subject to the fees for 2013.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Next is approved request for one-day liquor license, Woods Hole Historical Society, just for disclosure purposes, on the hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. A one-day liquor license.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Next up is approved request for a special event, Olympic gold medal celebration. Am I going to let Pat Flynn?
Go up to him.
Go right ahead, better.
I think it's probably more appropriate if I address the board from here. I'm a member of the committee, which formed last year to recognize the Olympic achievements of one particular Falmouth resident, his name is Eric Vent. Eric attended Falmouth High School when he was here, and in 2000, he won a silver medal in swimming. In 2004, he won a silver medal, and in 2008, he won the gold medal in the swimming meet for the Olympics in Beijing. Now, somehow or other, his achievements went under the radar, and it never really came to the attention, at least the Board of Selectmen, because I was on the board in '08, and I don't recall that. And in talking with his father, who's a member of our EDIC and has been a member, Bill Vent, for some years now, we were talking about the fact that we did, in 1998, recognize the Olympic achievement of Colleen Coyne, who was a member of the women's hockey team. And you remember, we had made, had a big celebration at the Lawrence School. We had all the kids there, all the school kids, it was really a great day. So we thought it was appropriate to honor Eric Vent in the same way. And while we have been working on this, we now find out that we have another Olympic gold medalist in our town, Ally Raisman, and they have a summer home in North Falmouth. I was in contact with her father in London, but since the, since they were like the, the big deal at the Olympics this year, they are on a 40-city tour, and they won't be in Falmouth on that weekend, so that's too bad, but maybe some other time, we'll be able to recognize her achievements. We also have another Falmouth Olympian from 1976, and he was, he didn't win a medal at the time, but he came in sixth. So, we think that this is a good opportunity to begin to recognize and honor the achievements of Falmouth Olympians, because we are, it's beginning to become about that we have some Falmouth people who definitely get into the Olympics. So, in working with PAL, with Casey Clarkson, who's the president of PAL, we want to do this for the children. And the first event is a swim meet, which now the Falmouth Aquatics Group is going to really help put together, and that's Rob Thiel and one of his other, the chair of the Falmouth Aquatics, they're helping to put together the swim meet. And that will be at Surf Drive in the morning, and then we'll have a parade from there with all the kids, up to Walker Street, up Walker Street to the lawn, the library lawn. I've already been to the library trustees, and they have, they have approved the use of the library lawn. And the Village Association talked with Mark Sofan, he is the president or chairman or whatever, they're okay with Pagnoon and Park, which I know we have to also approve. And also the closing of Library Lane, from Main Street down to that last entrance into the parking lot, so that people can actually access the municipal lot from both ends. And, and then of course, the use of Surf Drive Beach. So, when we get to the library lawn, we'll have a big celebration there, we'll have some dignitaries there, and hopefully, the board can come as well. I'm hoping to get a proclamation at next week's board meeting, so we can present that to Eric. And in terms of the, the inspiring speaker, we think will definitely be Eric, we're working with him, he lives and works in Singapore right now. So, he's flying in from Singapore Thursday before that weekend, and probably flying back over the weekend afterwards. And people from Woods Hole, who happen to do work in China, or in that area, say that the jet lag, jet lag is worse coming west than it is going east, so, or rather, worse going east than it is going west. So, jet lag will be a real problem for him when he gets here. But I'm sure when he sees all of the interest and applause and congratulations from the people in Falmouth, that that will keep him awake for the ceremony. So that's what's happening, and the committee members are Tori Clarkson, Casey Clarkson, myself, and Jack Rosenbaum, with the Rotary Club. The Rotary Club has been a sponsor, we have some other sponsors lined up. It's not really going to cost us anything, particularly because we have donations from some businesses. We want to have medals for the kids in the swim meet, and there are other requirements, they have to have certain neon-type swim caps, so that each child can be seen in the water. We're coordinating with Don Hofer, who's helping us out with the swim meet. Any questions?
I just have one, Pat. Currently, we have, I believe it's on Academy Lane, a plaque.
Yes.
You know, honoring Colleen Coyne as, as a medalist. Are there any intentions of adding to that, like, i.e., you know, a gold medalist road or something of that nature, that we could add some additional plaques there?
Yes. What we're hoping to do is, we've been working with Clover Landscaping to see if we can get a big rock that we can put there, because that's a really small rock that has her plaque. Oh, by the way, we've also contacted Colleen, and we're hoping that she can come and be here that Saturday as well. But we would have a bigger rock that we would probably engrave, and then, and then on the other side, list the other Falmouth Olympians that made, that maybe participated but did not actually win a medal, something like that. And now we call it Academy Way or something, we did something in 98, and I didn't get a chance to go back and look at the minutes of the board meeting from that, but we'd like to designate it Academy, Olympic Square. We can't change the name of Academy Lane, I mean, it's there forever, it will always officially, for road purposes and DPW purposes, be Academy Lane, but for celebratory purposes, we would like to call it Olympic Square, and that would be, that would take a vote in the board to do that. But I didn't put that in that tonight, I may be back next week with, with that, so we want you to think about that and give some thought to designate it, because there will be a much larger rock there with more on it, that will draw people's attention. And that way, it will just continue on what we've already intended it to be, and that is Olympic Square.
That's a great idea. Any other, Doug?
My understanding is that the beach parking will no longer be permitted parking at that point, so anyone can come to this event and park.
That's right.
They surf drive at that point.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, so the, do I have a motion to approve, request for a special event?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to approve the minutes of August the 6th, 2012, while, while we have a little time before we start our shellfish workshop.
I have one little change.
Sure.
On page three, the very bottom, Capitol Advisory Committee, just said Zeb Rich, not Ed Rich.
Right.
Excuse me, whereabouts?
On page.
Page three.
Where, on page three?
Last paragraph.
Last paragraph.
And what was the change, please?
His name is, he goes by Zeb.
Z-E-B.
Z-E-B, Rich.
Answering.
Rich, R-I-C-H. So, with that correction, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it.
abstaining one, I wasn't here.
You're okay, one abstention. Just for informational purposes, while we speak in regard to that, in the Capitol Advisory Committee, we will be advertising the two additional at-large members, and the date for the applications, final date for applications to be received in the Selectmen's office is on September the 14th, and we will interview those candidates on September the 24th. So, if anybody has an interest in serving on that Capitol Advisory Committee, please do so. Again, get your application in by September the 14th, and we would interview you on September the 24th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I ask that we read the mission on the, to just put on public record, because we didn't discuss it, but we have it, we have it, but no one else has what our mission is about.
Okay. So, do you want to read that into the record?
Yes, I would suggest.
Okay. You happen to have it handy?
Yeah. Mission of the Capitol Advisory Committee, the function of this committee is to review, discuss, and formulate a proposed short and long-term capital plan, including a financing vision and strategy for addressing the development of a permanent capital stabilization fund addressing municipal capital project and equipment needs, both town and school. It is intended this committee will make a report prior to 2013 springtime meeting, and will disband upon the completion of this charge.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When I was speaking about the Olympic event, I didn't notice that Don Hofer was here, and I wondered if maybe he could be invited to say something if he chooses to?
We'll be more than happy to hear a comment from him.
I don't have anything to say.
Oh. Okay.
Wow, that's interesting. It's a very unusual night, he must be saving his voice for something. We already went through the summary of actions, just so you know, okay. Next, we will move to a shellfish work session. The purpose of this session is to increase the shellfish population and develop a more vibrant fishery resource in Falmouth through the collaboration and cooperation with the Massachusetts Marine Fisheries, the commercial fishermen, recreational fishermen, and the Town of Falmouth staff resources. Before we get going, I'd like to make a few comments, as the chair. I'd like to acknowledge that we had invited the Division of Marine Fisheries, and I don't know if in fact, they said that they would be sending a biologist, is a biologist from the Division of Marine Fisheries here? I don't see him as of yet. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. I know that the, the staff of the Falmouth Natural Resources Department is represented here, George Hampson is represented, the Harbor Masters Office is represented here, the Economic Development Industrial Corporation is represented here, because in fact, they do have a subcommittee on aquaculture and shellfish, and I just wanted to make sure that this is an open and candid discussion. We will not be talking this evening in regard to the shellfish relay. The state is not prepared at this time to be able to discuss that, but they will like to, would like to discuss that in the, in the future, when in fact, they are, have finalized their reports on shellfish relays. I'd like to make sure that all of our comments tonight are based on moving forward and not looking at the past, being able to generate a vibrant shellfish habitat, as well as a shellfish fishery in the Town of Falmouth. Please address any and all comments through the chair, and as a disclosure purpose, just so folks are understanding, I own a restaurant that does use quite a bit of shellfish, but I need to disclose that to each and every one of you as well. What we will do to begin tonight is, I've done a general overview of the Falmouth shellfish operations. Chuck Martenson, would you like to start with that?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Chuck Martenson, and I'm the acting director of the Department of Natural Resources. Thank you all very much for this opportunity this evening. Just starting off, what I'd like to speak with the board about, and everyone who's here tonight, are a few different things. First of all, how we grow quahoggs. Second of all, some facts about shellfish licenses. Third, funding. The fourth is the three components of local shellfish management, and finally, some biological considerations moving forward for the Board of Selectmen and everyone else here tonight. Just start off with quahoggs. We grow approximately 2 million seed quahogs each year. These, these quahoggs are initially grown from, within the first month and a half, by the Aquacultural Research Corporation down in Dennis. As a side note, many of you might have read in the newspaper that ARC has kind of, in some rough times right now, and there's a possibility that the county might be stepping in with local towns, and I just want to ask the board to keep an eye on that. That is our primary seed provider, and certainly very important. So anyways, 2 million, 2 million quahoggs come in each year, usually late, late spring. DNR staff oversees the propagation program that is attended to daily by our core of 12 volunteers. We have three upwellers located at Green Pond, West Falmouth, and Falmouth Inner Harbor. This is our Green Pond upweller. Let me show you, this is West Falmouth here as well. For anyone who's not familiar with how upwellers work, upwellers take raw water from the ocean, and they move it up into this, into this box here. And the way, the way they work is, there's a set of silos that are inside here, which is in a further slide, which I'll show you. In the silos, there are the shellfish. The shellfish grow and, and in these silos, and then there's water pumped back out, the water that's already come through those shellfish, and back out into the ocean. This is the look at the inside of what one of the upwellers looks like. These are the individual silos right here, which have approximately, in each one of them, 50,000 pieces of shellfish, in each one of those. This is the shellfish upweller from McDougal's Marine. This was a 2006 project, it was donated by McDougal's after they did some construction on their property, and there was some requirements on their behalf to mitigate a few different things. The normal mitigation practice is to actually provide seed. McDougal's provided us a lifetime upweller. We do not pay for electricity at this site. If a pump breaks, we just simply make a phone call to the management there, they send staff down to fix it, they set it up. The only thing that we provide to this is the seed to grow shellfish in, and the volunteer staff to grow them in there. So it's very much a win-win, this, this most recent one that's come up online. After the shellfish grow for approximately seven or eight weeks, they, they're varying sizes, just like, you know, humans or any other animal, they vary in size. They also vary in, in their growth rate by their placement inside the silo. This is a handful that shows you that there's a number of different sizes of shellfish in there. What we do is, we go ahead and we take these, and we run them through a sieve, and the sieve will take the larger ones out, and the larger ones will go out into shellfish cages. This is what a shellfish cage looks like. This is a single cage, we can actually stack multiple cages on top of each other. Now, just in order of magnitude, when we, when we initially, three weeks in, the shellfish are this size right here, then after about six weeks, they grow to this size, and then in about 12 weeks, they're somewhere around here. Obviously, they vary at different rates, but this is the size when we move them to shellfish cages. And just pass those down. Folks would like to have a look at those. One of the, and as you're looking through those bags, you'll notice that in there, some of the shellfish have these, these markings on them. These are called notata, and you can't see it very well, just because of the, the light in the room, you could see it better if we shut the lights on a little bit further, but this notata marking right here is a genetic, it's a genetic trait that's actually bred into a certain percentage of the amount of shellfish that we, that we grow. When we're in the field, we can look at a basket and extrapolate, first of all, the age of the animals, and if you look at these shellfish, each one of these heavy rings right here represents a year, a year growth ring, because they slow down in the winter, there's slower growth rates in the winter. So you can extrapolate how old the shellfish is, but then you can also extrapolate that if, if there's a certain percentage of them that are in there, you can go back and look in your records and say, you know, 2009, we had 5% of our shellfish were notata, so for every five that are in that basket, we know that that represents the, you know, 5% of the fish that are in that total basket that were seeded. So, it is quite time-consuming to go through and do that, but there are ways to monitor our seeding program, there's a, so that we're not just simply broadcasting them and saying, you know what, these shellfish are doing fine, and that's it, and just walk away from it. There is an option to, to track those fish. This is a kiosk that was built in 2011 on the McDougal's site by the Boy Scouts of America, Daphne Builders and Falmouth Lumber. I think the, everyone here gets a sense tonight, that this program is very much a community program. It, it is a community program, and we hope it to be a community program going forward. We depend on a lot of community groups to work with us to further this program, and it's really a hallmark of the program. Looking at our propagation volunteers, as I said, this, the representatives is families and private citizens, there's clubs and organizations, Senior Environment Corps and private businesses make up this, this group, which fluctuates a few, you know, a few either, either way, each year. Onto shellfish permitting, over 95% of our shellfish permit sales in the last 10 years are for recreational diggers, and recreational diggers are defined as family license holders, non-residents, and senior permit holders. Just under 5% are commercial permit holders. Last year, we had over $66,000 taken in for all shellfish license fees. Over the period between fiscal year 2007 and 2012, we averaged a profit of $39,000 a year on those licenses. And I know Manager Suso is going to get into some more of the workings of the finances behind it. behind it, but that's a, it's a very interesting point for us to bring up right now. For our fiscal year 2012 budget, our propagation account was unfortunately cut in half during budget time. I'll go through and show you where we stand on that and kind of where we need to hopefully move forward from here to bolster that program. This is the, now, I initially had made this presentation, part of this presentation, when we were still in fiscal year 2012, so some of the slides are dated a month, but this shows in fiscal year 2012, the $66,000 that we brought in, and then the propagation account and what we spent on propagation, and then, you know, anything from here up is the, is the profit. Not taking into account, obviously, officers' times and vehicles and all the other things that go into growing shellfish. Again, that represents the total licenses over, over the, over the 10-year period. The license fees are as follows: commercial permits at $300, residents $25, non-residents $80, and seniors are $5 license. In comparison to other towns, these license fees are pretty much middle of the road. And I made up a slide here which shows some of the towns. And I use these towns. Barnstable's obviously the largest town on the Cape. Yarmouth is somewhat similar to our, to our size, and Mashpee's a bit smaller. So in the middle there were shellfish fees. If you look at the total number of licenses though, you'll see that Falmouth is actually, in fiscal year 2011, inconsistently, is actually ahead of other towns in the total number of licenses. We actually have more licenses, and these are just commercial licenses. And we have other slides that we could show you guys if you'd like to see, you know, how the family fits in and everything else, but, you know, on the commercial end of things, we're certainly up there. We, we have a number of licenses. When you look at the funding in fiscal year 2011, you see that we're, we're right here, and, you know, Mashpee, which is a much smaller town than we are, has substantially less fishermen, actually is putting in more money in the fishery. Now, this, I remind you, was fiscal year 2011. This year, we're down in this range right here, so we're actually lower than that. This is the trend for the 10-year period, 2001 to 2011. Again, I didn't put in that last 2012, which would be down here, so that line would continue down here, so we're actually at the, at the 10-year low or the 11-year low. Just discussing some of the challenges. Economic and environmental challenges over recent years have placed significant stress on our estuaries. This has resulted in the loss of various shellfish habitats such as eelgrass and the reduction in the total number of shellfish. More people fishing coupled with a resource that is more difficult to find equals more stress to the resource, causing habitat stress with both the reduction in the total number of animals and a hit to the resource. To sum that up, if there's not as much shellfish out there, people have to work harder to get the amount of shellfish that they bring back to sell. You need to cover more ground, you need to put the rake into more bottom. The other resources that are there take a hit on that. This shows our license sales, the 2002 to 2011 period, and as you can see, as the economy started going downhill, our licenses started creeping up until we reached about 125 or so licenses. Now, this peak right here is an important time, not only just because we're peaking in the number of licenses, but we're taking the animals out that do a lot of spawning. And these are, these are what are referred to as neck. These are our spawn, are real heavily used spawners. Necks sell for the most amount of money, so the neck in this time's really taking a hit. And now, as you remember from the other slides, we're actually not funding the propagation of shellfish that are going to go in and be our neck. Now, if you look at this, this is 2010, are going to be our neck in 2012, 2013. So we're, we're setting the trend, and that trend, you know, really started in 2006 and started ramping up in 2008, and then has been tailed off by, by the spending. It's important, I think, for everyone to know the three components of local shellfish management. The first is staffing, dedicated staff to provide full-time shellfish-growing components to oversee the shellfish reach maximum size before planting in the wild. Obviously, the larger the fish are, the better opportunity that they have to live. Staffed to further our volunteer programs, closely monitor the adjusting, and adjust to the changing environmental, environment, and communicate extensively with our commercial and recreational fishermen. The second is funding for capital, and this is for the purchase of seed for growing and for equipment such as shellfish racks and cages, and also for water testing material. We need to, particularly, is the, is we're struggling with the environment, we need to put the seed in at a larger size. We need to be more active in our water testing and, and also, you know, finding areas to plant this seed where it's going to thrive. It's not just simply going out and broadcasting it anywhere in the, in the water. You really need to start really picking and choosing where this goes. The third is the shellfish regulations, and these serve to protect the resources that we're, that we already have. There are various management tools such as caps on the number of licenses sold, resource closures, and catch limits. Just so we're all kind of on the same page, for shellfish to survive, they need adequate substrate to grow, adequate water quality, including dissolved oxygen, and food for growth and nourishment, and they need adequate spawning stock or parent stock for seed. Those are the three wild things. There's a fourth bullet we could put in there, and that fourth bullet would be adequate seed provided by humans, if we want to be a factor in this, which we clearly do. And the adequate seed is size and the health of it and everything else that goes into there. Now, I know Dr. Hampson's going to go a little bit further into eutrophication issues, but I just wanted to cover them quickly myself as well. We've had a significant loss of habitat in the last 20 years. We've seen significant changes in flora and fauna communities. We've had significant levels of, you know, scabs and soft-shelled clams and eelgrass that we've lost. A lot of these have all but disappeared. The cause of this is increased hydrogen sulfide and a decrease in dissolved oxygen brought on by eutrophication. This has resulted in fish kills. The most recent example of one of these ecosystem crashes, which we do have, and we've had it with the soft-shell clams in Born's Pond about five years ago, we've had a number of different ones that I can go back to. The most recent one was about three and a half weeks ago, and it involved 18 dead striped bass, 12 dead blue crabs, and two dead horseshoe crabs. And the Division Marine Fisheries came down and worked with us extensively on this fish kill, took samples and determined that it was this low dissolved oxygen event that caused this. And this is the picture of, of what happens in a pond when we have one of these crashes. Animals die. In closing, I'm excited to see movement on the nitrogen issues that are facing this community and threatening many of our marine natural resources. In order to maintain a fishery in our community, I stand united with the fishermen behind me and asking your support, moving forward with stabilizing our fishery by enhancing our levels of propagation through all three of the management components. This increased effort will help bridge the time gap between our current nitrogen situation and the anticipated benefits from nitrogen reduction during the coming decades. And I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I hope that sums it up quick enough for the board where we're at.
If you don't mind, I'd like to, rather than go through three presentations, take questions as we go. And I do have a couple of questions before I open it up to the board. Number one is, in regard to the upwellers, would it benefit this town to have more upwellers? And that's the first question. The second question is, when we put seed in an upweller, is that seed only distributed in that particular embayment, or is it distributed then after it grows in other embainments as well?
Sure. The first answer to your question is yes. Certainly would be more helpful to have more upwellers, more shellfish cages. We do not have an adequate amount of shellfish cages right now, so any of that equipment, equipment would be very helpful. The second answer is, is that the shellfish, the only time that they're exclusively planted in the shellfish area where they're grown in is if we're unable to send them out for shellfish testing. And the only time that that's really happened in the last 10 or 11 years was actually last year when we had the hurricane. It takes about two and a half weeks to three weeks for the shellfish to go out after we're done growing them. We send a group of them out to a veterinary pathologist. It's a veterinarian, just like you'd bring your dog to. And so, not to make the answer long-winded, but the answer is, is they're distributed throughout the town with one exception, and that is when a hurricane sneaks up on us and we haven't had time to test them, and then they can only be planted in that one pond that they're grown in.
Okay. Another question, you showed us a track of specific amounts that different towns spend. Do those amounts actually include employee salaries, or is that just for seed?
No. When we did that survey, we actually went through, and I will, here it is right here, I think this is the slide you were referring to. That was actually what was spent on shellfish proper itself.
So that seed itself?
So that seed itself. Seed, cages. We wanted to make sure we were talking apples to apples, so that's seed, that's cages, that's animals.
Okay. And it's important for me to frame this entire discussion a little bit. The Board of Selectmen tonight accepted our strategic five-year plan, and one of the areas of the plan, section 2.21, is to create an adequate shellfish management plan in the community, and this was, the leadership of this community had put this as one of our goals in, over the next five years. And that would be at the beginning of January of 2013. And then 2.22 is evaluate staffing levels and support the fishery, which would begin in fiscal year 2014. So the Board of Selectmen has sent out a message to the management of this community, meaning the town manager's office, as well as the department heads, of this is one of our goals within this Board of Selectmen, what we came up with as we move forward. So I think that's important as we frame this conversation tonight. Okay, I'll open it up to other questions on Mr. Martenson's presentation before we move forward. Anybody else?
I thought you had mentioned that you could tell us a little bit about what the ramifications of the cutting budget were going to, what's, how it suffered because the budget was cut in half.
Right. So essentially, what's happened is, is that the ramifications are that more licenses were actually sold, and we were unable to do, to raise to that bar, the seed, as much is, was being taken. A lot of communities use the, I believe it's called the enterprise account model, so thereby it's constantly chasing itself. If you sell 150 permits, the, over 100 permits, the funding level significantly increases in that account, so that the following year, there's more seed going in the water.
And my understanding was if you have more licenses and less seed, you are then going to be suffering three or four years down the road.
Absolutely.
Not right now, we're not going to see what's going to happen, it's more, the future that's really going to be suffering.
Correct, correct, yes.
Right. And it's important to note too that when the Board of Selectmen set fees, we don't set fees to make a profit. We really should be setting fees based on the services and what it costs actually to, to do, provide that service. Okay? Pat?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The funding that you have now, what does that actually buy you in terms of seed?
There's, it buys us approximately 2 million cohogs. This year, it was 1.8 million cohogs with, I believe, 200, 200,000 from Barnstable County as well. But also coming out of that same account is, in addition to that, we also pay out of that account for approximately four weeks for a herring, passage specialist that basically comes in and clears a lot of the debris out of the herring runs as well. So that's funded out of there as well. And then outside of the actual animals from that account as well comes, you know, gloves, basic equipment we need to run that operation.
Now, the seed you buy, is that at one stage of growth, or is that at several stages of growth?
It's at one stage of growth.
One stage of growth. I have to say, a week ago Wednesday, I happened to make the Cape Cod Extension Tour, and that included ARC, which is the Agricultural Resource Company down in Dennis. Some of, that's where we buy the seed, that's where they grow the seed. It was an amazing tour. And, and we toured other places like Chatham and their upwellers, which they have a whole building. Now, in the upwellers that we have here, are there different stages of growth of the seed, or is it all one stage in our upwellers?
In our upwellers, as I pointed out, they grow at different speeds within the upwellers, so, you know, they've got genetic traits, some are larger than others. By placement in the upweller, they're different. So the sizes in there vary, but when we sieve through those, certainly that variation is much less because we sieve through and then put them out into the cages.
I guess my question would be, are they separated by their stage of growth?
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
No, I mean initially, they're, after they're sieved through, that they, yeah, I mean, if you start doing that, there's, you're having inconsistencies in water flow, so that can kind of be problematic throughout the tank.
So they stay in the upweller for a period of time, and then you put them in cages?
Yep. So what, yeah, what we do is, yeah, they go out into the cages, and then some of them remain in the upweller for, for further growth. Yep.
And then, and then how long do you leave them in the cages? Like a year, a year and a half, however?
They're left in the cages usually till mid-October.
Oh, just, just that short period of time?
You can see the, by the growth. We strive to have them the size of a quarter when we release them. In reality, anywhere, you know, roughly the size of a nickel.
Okay.
No, that's not a scientific.
Well, no, but I, you know, I had this tour, so I don't know everything. I only know what I saw, but I know in Chatham, they have, they have the cages, and they have them at different stages of growth. In certain areas of the harbor, they have small seed and others, a larger seed and stuff.
And once they make the cages, they're in varying levels. I mean, our limiting factor on them being in various stages in the cages is that we only have, you know, 40, 45 cages, so.
Right. So, so what would you like to see here? What would you, what would be your goal in terms of seed and production and, you know?
My goal, the primary goal that I would, would have would be to bring on possibly a staff member that is solely dedicated to that resource component and really having no other job besides that. Not involved in the enforcement and the things, just involved in the, in the technical growing, making of shellfish cages, just that end of it. I think that that's very important. Clearly, on the wish list would also be a program set up so that we, first of all, could be spending, you know, when you looked at the, the amount of shellfish licenses that were going out would match with the amount of seed that we would be seeding. And then, you know, there's certainly other things we could look at. We could also look at, you know, remaining the shell, keeping the shellfish open for one or two more years, and then, you know, if people are already in the system, possibly closing it off, and then as, as people leave, possibly bringing some of those numbers down to a certain point, and then having a lottery to get into it. And basically, you know, this is a professional career for a lot of fishermen, for all fishermen, and, you know, when things, when you have a good fishery for a year or two, that hurts a lot of fishermen behind me because people jump in, there's, they're selling a lot more shellfish, they're diminishing the market, you know, so that would stabilize, I think, the shellfish market as well.
Considering the waters that we have here, how much seed do you think we could actually accommodate to grow in all of our, in our capacity to do that? If we had the, the human capacity to do it?
I honestly, it would be tremendous.
Tremendous.
Tremendous. I mean, Falmouth is blessed with a significant waterway. It, it's not endless, but we could, we could do very, very well.
I think it's, I mean, you, you look at the Town of Barnstable, they're spending $100,000 on seed. We have the largest coastline on the entire Cape, and we're spending a minuscule amount, so I think it's conceivable that we could spend at least that amount of money. Of course, when you hit diminishing returns, it's not only just the commercial shellfishmen I think we're here talking about tonight, it's the abundance of recreational permits that we issue. Granted, you know, it provides a livelihood for many of these folks here, but it also provides a destination of why people come to Falmouth. Maybe they want to be able to enjoy our beaches, our waterfronts, our harbors, and they want to be able to maybe dig a peck of clams once a year when their relatives come to town. So I think that's important, that when we talk about fees, we're not just talking about the habitat, we're talking about the quality of life in the Town of Falmouth in this regard, because that's one of the things that, you know, if we look back at our town seal, you know, we have our water there, and that's one of the issues that is most important. I wanted to ask the question though about staffing versus volunteers. You know, volunteers, we've found that we, you know, Falmouth is a can-do community. We have an abundance of volunteers, but when you have a professional guiding those volunteers, it, it really can make a difference. My question to you is currently, how much time do you have to give to this particular aspect? You know, this board always talks about program You know, this board always talks about program funding. In other words, let's divide up your time. How much of your time, if you were to say, do you actually spend on the fishery, not the enforcement aspect? You know, give me a percentage, 5, 10? I mean, we know how many hats you wear in this community. I mean, you do enforcement for the Conservation Commission, you know, just general, you know, natural resources protection, and it comes down to everything from, from deer to, you know, to dogs and somewhere in between. And shellfish is just an aspect of it. So maybe you can give us an idea of how much you actually have the ability to spend on actually, you know, growing our shellfish population.
I think it certainly-
This isn't a, this isn't a setup question, this is-
It varies from year to year. And it certainly, our volunteer component has significantly grown over the last seven or eight years, but I think time-wise right now, maybe 15% of my time. I, I, you know.
Okay.
Sometimes it's, it's more, sometimes it's less, you know?
Okay. Well, that's, that's a fair, that's a fair answer, we're looking for ballparking. Yes, then?
I want to sort of reiterate something you said, Chairman Lurk, and that is, I don't see putting more money into shellfish propagation is going to make the town more money, and I don't think that's really relevant. I think your point is saying, this isn't a time to necessarily make more money, it's time to make sure that we are supporting a resource that our town has and makes it a good place both to live and to come visit. That, I don't think we can sell more licenses in a great number or increase the fees for it, even if we do increase the amount of money we put into propagation.
And I think that's appropriate for the guy who heads the School of Science down at Woods Hole. How many times do the kids go out looking for, you know, to dig something and I hope they can come up with something? All right. Any other questions? Brett?
Do we have any idea about the numbers of shellfish taken by commercial versus recreational? You said the recreational folks are 95% of the licenses, but do they take 95% of the shellfish or is it a significantly smaller number?
I mean, if you, if you do the math out, and I'm not suggesting that everyone, that clearly everyone that goes out with, is not getting their bag limit every day, but if you do the math out, let's, say with Cohogs, you're looking at, you know, total possible bag limit or catch limit of 18 bushels, the reality is, a week. Reality is, it's less than that. And then, if you're looking on the family side, you know, you're looking at, you know, two packs a week of Cohogs. So there's, you know, there's various returns on that. We can get you all of our catch numbers, it's, it's done out in the end so that it's, it's a monetary value, it's around a million dollars. It hovers 800,000 to a million dollars a year. And those are, you know, obviously estimates, but they're relatively good ones over the years. We can get you all those numbers.
Go ahead, Chad.
Is ARC your only source of seed or do you buy from other resources?
Our only source of Cohog seed at this point, yes.
Cohog seed. I guess my, and I'll ask the question later because I know we want to talk more about Falmouth, and I realize the importance of having that, that source available, but I have some questions about it which we can maybe address at the end.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before we move on to?
If I may, I'd just like to recognize a longtime colleague of mine, John Mendez, from the Division of Marine Fisheries here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. Next up, George Hampson.
I need a little help from my friend.
That gets right.
One more time, he didn't notice for me, so. I don't know, if you could operate that, Chuck, I'd appreciate it, too. And I could, I won't have to get off the podium here. George Hampson from North Falmouth. And I guess I'm here mainly because we had some of our fishermen to our Coastal Ponds Management Committee. And one fisherman said, he said, you know, one time I went out there and we used to get shellfish, and he said, it tended to get a lot of hydrogen sulfide on the bottom, and then eventually, the bottom got very, very hard and you could hardly penetrate with the tongs. And the thought occurred to me, what happened is, this whole environment had changed. And what I'd like to do here tonight is to show you what can happen to a shellfish environment or a non-shellfish environment, for that matter, and how it can change radically. By the way, that, when it comes up, it's going to be, that's it. And I'd like to have, these lights are a little bit too. Can we reduce some, some? What should I do?
The red one's dark. Oh, yeah? This one here? Yeah, that's-
I don't really care. Well, we'll see, but that's another, isn't there, how about this one?
Well, you set that one up.
I mean, I hate to be in the dark, but a lot of the stuff. Okay, so as you see, a lot of people are involved here, the Woods Hole group, thank you, that's perfect. And the town of Falmouth, of course, I wouldn't miss on that, the Oceanographic and also the University of Mass Dartmouth. Keep in mind that I worked at the Oceanographic for 37 years and after that, I retired for about four months and then I went to the University of Mass and worked for another 10 years. But mostly on invertebrates, okay? But I know a lot about shellfishing, but I'm going to keep mainly to the invertebrates. I'm going to show you what can happen on a rainy day, if you will. Healthy marine environment, what does it mean? Why is it important? Partners' responsibility. Next slide. Shellfish habitat, what does it mean? We all know what it means, a healthy environment. I'm here to tell you, you don't know, because changes occur in different stages and we can't keep track of how bad it can get and how, how good it can get and what recovery is. So my definition of shellfish habitat is the coastal land under the ocean conducive for production and harvesting shellfish, the past, the present, and the future. We always have to consider that. Is our present, the changes that are going on, and the future changes that Chuck would like to see and I would like to see and these fishermen would like to see. Next slide. Why focus on the shellfish habitat? Well, it just turns out that shellfish along with eelgrass is an amazing indicator of health. We always think of eelgrass, that's, that's the sentinel species. If you have a healthy shellfish supply, you have a healthy environment, even though you might not have eelgrass. That would be the, the real icing on the cake, if you will. What I'm here to tell you is, if we maintain a healthy shellfish habitat, we've got a very good environment. Next slide. Whose call? Partners, local government, your town. It starts with our town. Always remember that. We can't reach to the federal government. They're not going to solve our problems. We might get money from them, they're not going to solve our problems. The fisheries, town, state agencies, and ultimately, the fishermen and environmental organizations. You listen to the fishermen and they'll tell you in their words, we can go forward. Okay? Next slide. Okay, we all know what this is. If you don't know what this is, this is a disaster. And I was on the planning board to help create it, and I make that admission. We put nutrients into West Falmouth because we decided we could put our treatment plant on top of the moraine. It was a terrible decision and I have to live with it, but it's done. So all this water is going into West Falmouth. We know it's polluting West Falmouth, and I'm here to show you some kind of nasty pictures, but you have to live with it, okay? This is the change that I'm telling you about. Next slide. There's a beautiful day, the fall of '06, and we all know what that is, the dock, town dock in West Falmouth here and this beautiful boathouse across the way. And so, next slide. That's when it can get nasty, okay? You all know what this is. This is algae. The algae now is invading Snug Harbor. And here's the process that occurs. The algae settles on the bottom, it can smell, it can smother the shellfish or it can kill the shellfish by decaying and rotting. And it emits hydrogen sulfide, which is the worst thing in the world. So no matter what we do to harvest this eelgrass, the hydrogen sulfide remains in the sediments. Let's take a look at it. There's another one. Let's take a look at what I'm talking about. Here are the invertebrates, okay? This is a normal, healthy environment. Now what, why are the environment, why is it so healthy with all these little critters running around? They bioturbate the sediment, they keep it active. They process the sediment and they make it so that the hydrogen sulfide doesn't build up on the bottom. And this can only happen if these critters are alive. Now, if we kill these critters, next slide, I'll show you a few more. There's a head-down feeder, this guy here, actually, the head is down here and the tail is up here, but they process the sediment. These are called bamboo worms, and they make the sediment so soft that when you walk on it, it's like a cushion. But they, again, they circulate the sediment. Now, this is the kind of thing that the town is not aware of, and that's why I'm here today. I'm telling you that it's an active process and you can't get by with a healthy environment without these critters doing what they do. Next slide. There's clams, they do the same thing. They're processing, they're down in the sediment and they pump and they, and actually shoot the sediment up into the air, and, I'm sorry, into the water. But they do a beautiful job of reactivating the sediment also. Next slide. Now, when it goes bad, as you look over here, let's say we had a lot of algae that went on the bottom, this is called a fibroblanket. And what happens is, it kills all the animals. As you go further out here, when you have water and good circulation, the animals are still alive. But when you get to this phase, the animals are limited to only like one or two species. And they're called opportunistic species. That's a wonderful name, I love that name. It reminds me of, I won't say it, well, it's the federal government. But anyway, opportunistic species are such that they survive, they can take the hydrogen sulfide, they can survive through it, and, but there's nothing else. That's all you're going to have. When you're in this stage, the sediment is filled with hydrogen sulfide. Next slide. Here is a normal process. This, by the way, was developed by Don Rhodes of Yale University. He did a wonderful thing. He made an X-ray that he could push into the sediment and take a photograph of the side of the, of the, of the bottom. And if you look at that, it's fairly sandy color, you're going to see a contrast from this. This is a healthy environment, relatively, okay? And if you look at the top here, it's a little bit darker, but what happens is, in a, when you have that algae form, like we did, we saw in Snug Harbor, it starts to build hydrogen sulfide. So let's take a look to see what it looks like over time. Next slide. You can see this whole thing here is hydrogen sulfide, okay? On the surface, a little bit of oxygenation there, because the tide comes in, tide goes out. But when Chuck puts a shellfish in here, they might survive on the surface for a short time, but then they grow. And when they grow, they're going to hit that sulfide, all right? And that's, they'll kill them, almost in every case, because it's, it's very, very toxic, hydrogen sulfide. Everybody, you should know that, by the way. If you ever smell it, you, you don't want to do that for too long. But anyway, there's the changes that are occurring. And a lot of our estuaries are going through this. Now you might say, well, George, what are you going to do about this? Well, we could dredge, we could dredge this area and get rid of all this, but we haven't solved the problem, you see? Because there's more events that are going to occur, more algae is going to occur, we haven't solved the problem. And I think you know what the problem, how to solve the problem. There's only one way we're going to do it. Varieties of waves we can take to do this, but we've got to get rid of the nitrogen. And that's what it's doing to our shellfish, that's what it's doing to our invertebrates who are our healthy guys that bioturbate the sediments. Next slide. Yeah, that's essentially what I said, keep our marine habitat clean. And those are all the things, you can read them. Fertilize your lawn, you know about these things, they're, these are all common sense things. Get involved with your town, join a related committee for, running for office to help certain things, certain organizations, and we have a lot of them here in town. So, anyway, my main objective coming here, next slide, I think, yeah, beauty of clean waters. My main mission of coming here is to make you aware of that water and the sediments that you don't see. And you probably haven't heard all about this, but it's causing a change in our environment. How to rectify this? It's called time. Nature and time, that's the only way to solve it. Get rid of the nitrogen. And some of these places will come back, all right? By the way, an example, I was asked to talk about an example? When we went to Boston Harbor, when I worked for the Estuaries Project, I remember diving there, and the sediment was, well, there were animals there, but not a lot of them, but it was black sediment underneath. And when they switched over with the new process in Boston Harbor, it took about five or six years and slowly, it changed. And more invertebrates came in, the bioturbation increased, and, and the thing completely changed. And it took, oh, at least, at least five to 10 years to, to get clean. So I hope I made a difference in explaining to you about the world that we don't see, all right? And the fact that it isn't just a case of spending money, we're going to solve the problem. We have to go through a process. And nature is a wonderful organization, I'm sorry, a wonderful process, nature, and it will take care of the, of the other part. Okay? I'd be glad to ask, I'll answer any questions.
I guess that, that is a question I'm going to have for you, George. Can we put on a couple lights, maybe?
Okay.
No, stay there, George. I want to ask a question.
Yeah, I'm going to stay here.
And the question is, we all understand, you know, trying to solve our waste management, pardon me, our wastewater issues in this community, and I think that we understand it will make our coastal embayments a lot healthier in the future. But that's a generational solution, and I'm looking out here and I see folks that, that are in a living day in and day out, as well as we have a ton of recreational fishermen that, that want to be able to still fish in our waters. Is there a way or are there proper locations that are still healthy enough now that we can seed, you know, Cohogs and, and maybe, you know, increase our habitat?
Well, I think, I think Chuck has answered that. But meanwhile, if, if some of these things go online that we're planning on doing with the, with our committee that's helping to reduce nitrogen loading, some of those are going to come faster than others. So my suggestion would be to make an interaction between cleaning up the environment and seeding in the new areas that they improve. But, you know, Chuck has to go out there and review to find out if in fact, it's worthy of receiving that shellfish seed. He doesn't want to go out there and throw seed in if it's hydrogen sulfide loaded, you know? So it, it isn't the fact that we're not going to see a change for 10 or 15, 20 years, some of these places, we can clean up right away.
Can I ask you a question? And you're really, pretty knowledgeable about most of our, our waterways. A place like Wild Harbor, you know, I grew up over there and the fishery is, appears to be jam-packed, you know, except it hasn't been opened or, for quite some time since the oil spill many, many years ago. Do you think we can open up a fishery like that at some point in time?
The answer would be yes. You have to make sure you test the shellfish. We know we have oil in parts of that area, but I don't think it's located where the shellfish are. But you have to go through a process of testing the shellfish to make sure, and my answer would be through Chuck, always through him, is to, yeah, I think you should. But I, I would like to make sure that the general public has access to that, if you know what I mean.
Sure.
You know, I would, it would be kind of tough if you, if you, if, if the fishermen couldn't go in there or people from other parts. We've got to have some way of, of the general public going in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to open it up to any other questions from the board, from Mr. Hampson? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you. Um, next up would be, uh, trend, trends in the town, funding for shellfish programs. Uh, and I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Suso handle that and then we're gonna open it up to any kind of public comment, any other questions from the public for any of these folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few comments and observations. The, uh, the board received a, a summary of, uh, shellfish propagation revenues and expenditures from FY 2007 through FY 2012, which I think is, um, pretty telling. And certainly the, as the board's aware, on that same spreadsheet, the six-year average revenue is, uh, $63,700, approximately the average six-year expenditure on shellfish propagation, just being under $24,000 annually. And obviously, there's a big disparity there between revenue and expenditures. And when you compare that to this, uh, the reality that Chuck Martenson talked about, that we had a relative spike in terms of, uh, shellfish licenses sold back in approximately two, FY 2008 and the fact that during that same fiscal year, uh, again, a very large disparity in terms of licenses sold and expenditures in propagation and those kinds of things clearly have, have begun to catch up and come to a head, I think, as was noted in FY 12, when we've, we had our largest disparity in only a little over $12,000 in appropriations for shellfish expenditures. So there is a, a need to work diligently, obviously with the concurrence of this board, the finance committee in town meeting, to set aside additional funds for, uh, shellfish propagation, uh, to restock the kind of equipment that we need to begin to restore, uh, this, this resource. Also recognizing, as, uh, Dr. Hampson has pointed out, that we do have some dynamics in process that will, uh, working with a, the draft comprehensive wastewater management plan that this board has already affirmed and approved, the filing of, uh, that will, hopefully, accelerate the nitrogen removal process in some of our embayments. That having been said, we know that it will not, definitely will not happen overnight, but I think if we work in tandem with, uh, additional funds for propagation, perhaps also with the concurrence of this board and the, uh, finance committee and ultimately town meeting, perhaps restore the shellfish technical specialist position that ceased to be funded several years ago when that position became vacant. I think it will put a dynamic process in motion that will maximize our ability to restore, I think, what, uh, Chairman Murphy, you referred to as the vibrant fishery resource, particularly from a shellfish standpoint, uh, in the town of Falmouth. So it would be my intention, working with this board, to suggest that that trend begin to be reversed as early as FY 14 and move forward and continue to, uh, work with all the appropriate entities in wastewater management, doing that as responsibly as possible and restoring funding to, uh, shellfish propagation and working with the professionals and in tandem with our recreational and commercial fishermen, many of whom are here this evening as well. And I also wanna touch on, Mr. Chairman, uh, what you had already alluded to, commented on, and that is, of course, with the five-year strategic plan just affirmed and adopted by the Board of Selectmen. As the board's aware, uh, this area of managing, uh, the town's harbors and waterways was targeted as a major priority by the board and one of, two of the areas for attention, uh, which I think are reflected in the work session this evening and will also be reflected in the budget proposal for FY 14 to come would be, uh, some additional attention to shellfish management and also enhancing our staffing ability and, uh, monitoring that to determine that we wisely expend the town's resources because I think as, uh, Selectman Jones correctly pointed out, this is really about a quality of life issue, quality of the environment issue, and it's not, uh, primarily about revenues and it's about, uh, really enhancing the treasure that we have here in the town of Falmouth. So we're happy to underscore that and to answer questions of Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Suso? Um, I would like to open this up to any kind of public comment. I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the Division of Marine Fisheries. You weren't here at the beginning of the meeting and I'm happy that you're participating. This board and this, this, uh, leadership of this community wants a collaborative process to be able to work with the Division of Marine Fisheries, with our local, both commercial, recreational and our staff within our community. And we hope that, uh, we can build a relationship that benefits the entire community, um, as we move forward. So, uh, any insight that you can give this board and the staff at this community would be greatly appreciated and would be happy to continue the dialogue as we move forward. I'm gonna open this up to any questions from, uh, those folks who, first of all, might be affected by this, as well as those folks who might, uh, have some insight, as well as some questions or whatever it might be. Yes, sir, come right up.
Hi, I'm Ron Zwygen. I'm a member of the Water Quality Management Committee. And I think that there's another important dimension in terms of the water quality management in the estuaries and options regarding shellfish, and that's aquaculture, which could be, which we're looking at now as in a demonstration project to see basically the degree to which it can help clean up the estuaries, provide additional employment and additional food for the town through the shellfish culture. So it's, and also fresh shellfish to the community for sure. The, uh, at present, at the moment now, we have a viability test in Little Pond and in Green Pond. And we put in some small, tiny oysters that, that were basically donated by Matt Weeks and the cages to put them in or the bags to put them in where, uh, Dan Pujer generously gave, basically donated to the town to, to use. And they are growing really fast. And we just put them in about three weeks ago. They're all alive and they're growing quickly in Little Pond as well. And the one difference is, is that with the aquaculture, we would not be working directly in the sediments, which are problematic, as, as Dr. Hampson has pointed out, um, and Chuck as well. The, the, um, so we're looking at working above this, above the bottom for nutrient uptake, which will help water quality as well as, um, and possibly floating. The current ones are floating on the surface in the ponds and being tested. So we are moving forward with, through the Water Quality Management Committee and through your support to, um, to move this ahead. And I think this is a whole other dimension, the aquaculture dimension, that we're looking into as well, that can be a, a real benefit. The program also would look at shellfish seeding, uh, in the, for the fishery in addition to the aquaculture. So this would be another facet to it and how all this works out is now being determined. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Dave Brown, commercial shellfisherman. I'd just like to, um, touch on a couple points. And obviously, funding is, is key. We can't do anything without it. So it's all good news, what we've heard here tonight. I would like to make sure that, um, getting the proper personnel that goes along with the funding, we, as it is now, we don't really have anybody in the town who's qualified to manage a shellfishery. And I think finding the right people is gonna be key to moving forward in the future. And just one thing on the aquaculture, I'd like to just touch on it. Private aquaculture is against town law and against state law in these south coastal ponds. We're trying to get more area, get area back, not lose area to private aquaculture. I support private aquaculture. Where, where blondes, which is an area that's not productive, there's not room for it in these coastal ponds, not privately. If it's done on a municipal level, that's a whole different story. But as, um, Mr. Mendez can tell you, the coastal ponds is not the place for private aquaculture.
Okay. Um, I could make a comment that if, if in fact, uh, a staffing position were to come to fruition, that very often, um, we look for input for those folks who are affected, as in a representative. That hire would of course be the town manager's hire, but, uh, any input, uh, from, you know, folks in the community is always, uh, well-taken at, at, at the highest levels here. Anybody else have any questions? Yes.
Mark Finner in Precinct Six. I don't know if this is accurate, and I guess Mr. Hampson is the one who can answer it best. I've been told by numerous shellfishermen and others that, that this town, um, underutilizes the Barnstable County dredge, not only for beach nourishment, but for, you know, cleaning up, uh, sections of these ponds. Is, is that true in your opinion?
He's gonna have to come back. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hampson, do you wanna go up and answer that question?
Yeah, Mark, that's a little bit out of my territory. I, I, I do know from my experience that it seems that certain counties or certain towns, uh, take the benefit of that more than we do. I think we could work on that. But right now, I think, uh, our committee, as far as dredging and where to dredge, we should let those folks decide what, what's best because I'm not gonna interfere with that, with that organization. I think they're doing a good job. And, uh, but I do know of dredging that worked out very successfully in, in Barnstable. We went in there and checked, defined out how the shellfish were doing years later and it propagated very well. In other words, they did dredge the area, removed the stuff and the shellfish did come back. And, uh, that was a success story. Thank you.
And maybe a good, good lead in to that, and go ahead, George, would be, uh, our harbormaster, Greg Fraser, who, um, has dredging permits in place. It might be an opportunity as we move forward, after those permits are utilized and we have those, maybe those could be prime areas for seeding and things of that nature. Would you like to speak at all when we got to? The permitting process, which is very lengthy to begin with.
Very extensive. Um, you know, most of the dredging we do, obviously, is for inland dredging and for navigation purposes. We, it's not, has not been our charge in the past to get involved in either water quality or, uh, shellfish issues for dredging. I'm familiar with the project, George's hot bug down in Barnstable. I certainly think it would be worthwhile for us to investigate that, but as you know, from even the, the small inland dredging projects, the permitting involved in that, the, uh, would be extensive. Not that we shouldn't go that direction, but, um, you know, it's nothing's gonna happen very quickly. Just the comprehensive permit that we're, uh, have been dealing with this last year, uh, you know, we still haven't gotten the Army Corps of Engineers to sign, uh, seal approval on that. Everybody else has signed off on it, but, you know, that's an idea for just combining existing permits to give an idea of how long that takes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other comments, Chuck?
I just couldn't comment on the question.
If you can come up to the microphone, please? It's for the viewers at home, so.
Okay. In the past, I'm sure Chuck can tell you, he's aware of it, Salt Pond was dredged out, uh, mainly for water quality situation, but it came around to bite us because once the area was dredged to a depth that boats could get in and out of there, all of a sudden we had a, a landslide of Dr. Peters' application and put in there. And the place looks completely different than when we first dredged it. And we're actually trying to, uh, to work for a future that won't, will not repeat this situation.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
The name of that person?
Uh, yes, can you just?
John Mendez?
John Mendez.
Division Marine Fisheries.
Division Marine Fisheries. Okay, any other comments from anybody? Pat?
Just as a point of information, the county is considering the purchase of another dredge because of, because of demand.
Okay. Yes, sir, come right, come right up.
Uh, Jay Queen, commercial fisherman? Yeah, I, I would, you know, I had a kind of a list here, wrote down, didn't have a lot of time to do it. But, um, you know, I started them up with the dredge. I guess I gotta cover everything you're talking about. I saw them go through the channel, they were, not a dredge, but a boat that takes soundings. And I thought we figured out that that place is deep enough and needed more buoys. And that's a lot of money spent to find a problem that I don't believe exists. So I mean, that, that, that kind of thing as far as dredging, though, is something with me that I just, you just have to talk about is, you're not gonna dredge that and reseed it. They're talking about taking out a massive chunk of bottom on a productive bed that doesn't need to be dredged, that's, it's completely productive now. You're not gonna dredge it and reseed it because of the bottom that you're gonna take, because they're gonna take water.
Can you define the waterway you're speaking of?
We're quite big, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You're not gonna, they're gonna take bottom and remove it so boats can get it. You're not, you're not gonna reseed that bottom if it's taken down to a level where the substrate's gone, the good bottom is gone, which is what they're gonna do. If they're gonna dredge a spot, they're not taking out bottom, they're just turning bottom over. That's what they're talking about when this guy says he's gonna dredge bottom. They're just turning it over like a swallow fridge would do it, or a cobra fridge would do it. They're not gonna take and remove anything and then expect, well, you know, you've taken out all the mud that's taken 10,000 years to form, even though there's, there's bad pots in that mud because of the pollution we have. You're gonna be able to reseed that. It's gonna reseed itself because it's gonna now loosen up and you're gonna get spat, you know, and small corals and, you know, and stuff like that. So that, that thing with the dredge and just going around getting another dredge, I, I don't think that's a good thing because, uh, Green Pond Channel was, for the most part, a big chunk of it was completely, you know, taken out. And, uh, and Great Pond Channel was supposedly straightened out and it's a channel. You gotta steer your boat to get in and out of the place, it's a fact of law. And a good chunk of that was, was, it's just gone. It's not, it's not productive anymore. And you're not gonna reseed it because the bottom is, you know, it won't support shellfish. So that's that. So as far as the other thing with, with the money, I gotta spew, yeah, I gotta, I gotta get on my.
Okay, we remember, I started this evening by saying, "We're not gonna dwell on the past, we're gonna move forward to the future."
Right, oh, yeah. But as far as the money, I mean, we spent a lot of money on this, this aquaculture thing and, and, um, we didn't spend any of it on, on a, you know, on a fishery that we have, you know, that we could approve, which, which kind, it just, it just is a sewer spot with me, I just wanted to comment on that. Um, you know, hopefully, we can get money from who knows where, because we got money for that and we donated for that. That's, that could have been a mistake. It could have been something that somebody thought would work out and didn't work out and we gotta admit that and kind of move on with that and just do what we can do, you know, to propagate, I think, uh, an existing fishery. I, I don't think, you know, if we're trying to get a, I thought we were gonna try to get a, a position sooner than, uh, 2014. You know, I thought it was gonna try and, because it need, you know, we need it bad, like soon. And I, and I supported the thing whereas we, we don't have anybody now that's qualified. I don't believe that. I haven't seen the law enforcement and I haven't seen, you know, so I, I think, you know, you're on the right track to hire a guy and possibly get a guy to assist in the propagation and grow out the seed. Um, you know, the seed program is, to my knowledge, hasn't really worked and you can buy full-size seed, Mike Kiki knows about it, I mean, it's stuff you can buy and plant. And if you have a problem with the grow out and, and even in the best conditions, like say a town like Chatham, they've been doing it so long, they can have failures and they can absorb those failures. You know what I mean? We can't absorb a failure. That's why I was saying about buying, you know, seed that will live, is big enough, almost legal size. If you could get your hands on that and then take other money and then try and grow that s, that propagation program to where you, you know, you could absorb the mistakes that are gonna be made, that would make a lot more sense because we're hurting now. You know, this is gonna, this is gonna be years down the road. I mean, a five-year plan, it's better than, you know, it's, it's great, but it also has to, it has to change pretty fast, you know? Um, what if... What else? I guess it's pretty much the same. Well, I wanted to also say something about, about the state guys. I mean, they, they, you know, with everything that's going on and all this, you know, stuff that we didn't get, you know, we had a red tide a few years back, and they were on it. Nobody got sick. You know, they're, they're on the water quality part of it. You know, they seem to care, they know what they're doing. You know, you really do have to get them in board. And as far as planting and, and, you know, I think any kind of planting that you do, you have to use fishermen. We have to get a guy, we have a newly formed organization. You have to get one of us, you know, and consult with us, because when he just said, well, you've got to have Chuck out there figure out where to plant this stuff, well, you don't really have to do that, because we know, we, we're on it, we fish it, we live it. No one's going to know, and it's going to take years for anyone to know. I mean, it took me years, I moved, it took me probably five to 10 years to cover the whole town. It just doesn't happen like that. And you can be off by feet, you know, and dumped and just, you know, all right, you know, a hundred thousand, it's dead. You know, it's that crucial. It's just like when you go fin fishing, you drop, okay, there's nothing here, you drop it over here, it's loaded. So, you have to have that knowledge, you may have to utilize that knowledge. You know, and I hope that becomes part of the process. I really hope so.
Okay. Just a couple of things. 2014 is not the year 2014. 2014 would be the fiscal year, which begins June 30 next year. And like it or not, part of the process in government is that we have to go through town meeting, we have to go through the budgeting process, and, and we will look for the support of not only the shell fishermen, but the recreational fishermen to be able to help talk to your neighbors who happen to be town meeting members, because these things aren't done deals. Just because the Board of Selectmen thinks they're a good idea, it's important that the folks out there, meaning the general population of this community, who pay their taxes, think it's, thinks it's a good idea as well. So, this board is working with you, and we hope that when we talk about volunteers, we hope to start the collaborative process, get the Division of Marine Fisheries to help work with us a little bit more, as well as the idea and the ideal of the fact, we're talking about people volunteering to help seed. And, you know, it's all well and good to complain afterwards, but be part of the solution. Don't just be, you know, sitting there saying, this was all bad, because we need you to help, you know. It's part of the process. Most of this, this board up here surely doesn't do this for the money. It's because we want to be involved and help our community. We want you to be involved in the fishery, and we want you to be involved to be able to help this resource. So, when it comes time for looking for volunteers to help us some advice of where we should seed and where we shouldn't seed, we're really going to look to you. But if you're not going to come to the table, you're not going to help, please don't come ask, asking afterwards, why didn't it happen? Because it's important that you be part of the solution as well. And I hope that, that tonight, when we leave here, this board is going to try to act on your behalf, but it's going to be important that you participate in the collaborative process. What's the word collaborative really mean, guys? That means that we're all going to work together. It's not just one person or the other person. We need to make this work for the entire community. So, any other questions from the comment, from the, from the audience? Yes, Mr. Eldredge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Eldredge, I'm the Vice Chair of the Fountain EDIC. I just wanted to make the board aware that the EDIC spent some time last year identifying some important issues for economic development in town. One of the issues that came up was the agriculture industry, and we spent a good amount of time, we formed a subcommittee, of which Mr. Kevin Murphy is on, looking at this issue and identifying some opportunities for the town to work in hand with everybody in town to promote this and, as Mr. Murphy said, to really provide the foundation for our community, to make this a beautiful community. So, it's, it's an ongoing effort, and we look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board? Brett?
I have a few questions, actually. Earlier, Mr. Martinson mentioned $800 to $1 million a year in, in terms of the revenue or the, the value of the, the fishery. Is that wholesale? Is that retail? Where's that number come from?
The NOAA economic multiplier is seven, but, seven times that, but that's the actual value coming out of the water. Now, not taking into account that, you know, taking into account that recreational people don't sell their catch as well. That's the overall value coming out of the water, not including the multiplier of seven, which is the normal multiplier.
And do we know where it goes? Do we know where the, the market is, if you will, for Falmouth shellfish? I mean, obviously, the recreational folks are taking it home, but the commercial folks, is there, is there a market for Falmouth shellfish, or is it just sort of lumped in with?
Absolutely. I mean, there is some shellfish that stays on Cape, and then other shellfish leaves on the truck for Boston the following morning. So, yep, there is certainly a demand.
If I can just interject, one of the things that the EDIC got involved in this is because the community in Falmouth would benefit in all three tiers. The diggers and the producers, the wholesalers, as well as the retailers of the product. So, there's an economic impact on three different levels with, with shellfish in Falmouth. Not only do the people who dig it and grow it make a profit, but the folks who distribute it make a profit, and those folks who actually sell it make a profit. So, there is a multiplier that's extremely strong.
And the reason why I'm asking about the, the market, if you will, for Falmouth shellfish is I was at a, I had lunch at a, what do they call it, Legal Seafoods, a few weeks back. And in there you can get oysters that are from Wellfleet, that are from Cootuat, and they actually, I mean, you pick where you want the oysters to come from. And so, the question, of course, is when we talk about the value of, of the Falmouth market, there's obviously a premium paid. If you can get an oyster that has a Wellfleet name on it, I think Wellfleet is, is doing great guns of business by having a Wellfleet brand of shellfish. And the question, of course, is, is there a Falmouth brand of shellfish? And if not, how do we make it? Because it seems to me that that would benefit the shell fishermen, it would benefit the town, putting us on the, the map, if you will, so to speak.
I, I think, kind of is a, kind of is a general statement, oysters certainly have more of a branding function to them at this point. Certainly, the, the branding function of oysters in the town of Falmouth is certainly increasing as we have the name getting out there through all of our growers and the operations all over. And that, you know, that, down for the wild fishery, it actually, you know, people look for that in the wild fishery too, because it's their Falmouth oysters, you know. Not so much applied to Cohogs, but not to say that it couldn't be something that would be later on. And one other thing I want to point out, and I know it came up, and that was the red tide issue and kind of marketing in that situation. And we, we're fortunate enough, when, when red tide hit everywhere else, we didn't have it in Falmouth. And we actually brought a news reporter from Channel 5 Boston down, and we put them on a shellfish boat with one of our shellfishmen as they were digging, to get the word out that it was safe to eat shellfish from Falmouth. And I think statewide, that, that helped the state as well, to get the word out that it wasn't the entire state that was closed, because when the word goes out, red tide, it's kind of a flashing news clip, but it doesn't say red tide, but, you know, not in Falmouth and not in these areas, which we've been lucky to be spared, so.
Do you have any other questions?
I do have a couple of other questions. There are more for Mr. Hampson.
Can I just say one thing, Chuck?
You sure can.
The reason you see Wellfleet and Dennis and these other organizations with their oysters up in Legal Seafood is because they're agriculturally grown. That's really not talking about the wild fisheries. And this town is really just beginning to get back into agriculture. And once it does, you'll be seeing Falmouth also in those markets.
George?
I know there was some talk before, and I don't know if George even has the answer, but I'm guessing because he mentioned the, the ponds committee. Do you know where we are with the, the issue of water sheet zoning? Because I know that that's one of those things that when we talk about aquaculture versus the wild fisheries, that they were talking about zoning parts of the ponds to, so that there wouldn't be any interference between the two.
Good question, Brett. Our next meeting is going to be a critical one, where we're actually going to have the foundation of the water sheet zoning for one of the ponds. So, we're moving ahead, and I've been pushing for that. And obviously, I feel badly about that we haven't moved quicker, but obviously, you folks have learned, you know, some of the things that you think are the most easiest take the longest. And I'm, I'm going to push for that with, with our committee. Okay?
And the other question, and I think this is more to your expertise, I've got a boat, and every year that I put it in the water, I put bottom paint on it, because we've got it sitting on the moor. There's a lot of boats in some of these ponds, and some of them, you go up and down the Child's River, and there's, the boats are almost on top of one another. Is that having an adverse effect on the environment, do you think, all that bottom paint, all the chemicals from it? Or is it just a drop in the water compared to, say, the, the nitrogen issue?
I, I would say it's a trade-off, Brett. I, I don't think that you could exist having a boat in the water without having some kind of a bottom paint. It would be a horror show. You would have a boat that you wouldn't recognize when you took it out of the water. So, we have to have something. At one time, we had, what was the name of that top ten?
I know what you mentioned about, they improved.
Oh, good. There was, there was one kind of bottom paint that we had that you wouldn't have to worry about any following at all, but it was very, very toxic.
I think you're thinking of the tin-based.
PCBs. What the, what was it, Chuck? Anyway, it was an additive, and it was very effective, and we had no scallops. It was that bad. Okay? And West Falmouth.
So, we think what we have now is better than what we've had in the past.
Yes, yes. So, it's, it's a necessary evil, Brett. I think people are working on products that are far superior than they were in the past. So, that's all I can say. And as far as dredging concerned, I want to tell you folks that you have to dredge very, very carefully. You have to select the right places where you're going to do it. It's not just to open up a channel, because you can cause other problems by, by doing that. Okay?
Thank you. Brett, do you have any more questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Pat?
I wanted to save this till the end. You've probably heard, all of you, a lot of talk recently in the last several weeks about ARC, the Aquaculture Resource Corporation, and Dennis wanting to possibly sell their business, their property. And they, they have a lot of infrastructure needs there, their buildings need a lot of work on them. They do a huge amount of propagation, as you know. And I guess my question is, how important is ARC as a source for seed to you and to other communities on the, other towns on the Cape that you're aware of? Because we are looking at, the county is looking at it from, from many angles to see what might be the best solution for ARC, because it's important to the Cape, we don't want it to leave the Cape. It's, it's very critical, we think, to, to, to provide that seed for everybody. And I guess I was just looking for some kind of ideas that you might have on the importance of ARC to Cape Cod.
I can probably answer. John Mendes, Division Marine Fisheries. Really, the more growers we have of seed, the better off we are, because I can mention several that are available now, and some have problems. When they have problems, you have a choice of going to another grower, and that really makes a difference in this area. So, the more, the better, and we'd hate to see ARC lost.
Great, thanks.
Chuck, did you have a comment on that?
As I had mentioned before, they're a primary seed provider for Cohogs, and they're necessary, absolutely necessary. And beyond necessary, I would say it's paramount that we make that investment for, for the future of the fishery, a local future of the fishery, absolutely.
Okay. George?
Just a quick one.
Not a problem.
The name of the boat was Tributal Tin. It was highly toxic.
Tin-based. Yeah, I thought it was tin-based.
Okay.
Betsy Glachalter. I just want to make a, a comment that I've made in a couple of meetings we've had in conservation recently, one where Ron, you were at. And we all realize we have a local issue with nitrogen, but I just think it's also important to keep in mind, in addition to that, adding to that problem is, and I looked up in the World Temperature Organization, in 12 of the last 15 years, we've had the hottest years on record. And water, warmer water can hold less, less oxygen than cooler water. So, not only do we have the growth of algae, which is also accelerated with increased carbon dioxide available, but when that, in the nighttime, when it's respirating and when there's a lot of bacteria degrading it, which is adding to consumption of oxygen, we're having increasing low-oxygen events, which I suspect is one of the big problems with our, with our soft-shell clams. So, I just, not, this isn't, this isn't a solution, but I just want everybody to keep that in mind, that, that our, we have not only local problems, but we have regional and global problems that we have to keep in mind as well.
Thank you. All right, last call. Well, in summary tonight, I'd like to thank everybody for participating, and this is the beginning of a process. We hope that the board and the town manager are able to work forward before town meeting to come up with maybe the early stages of what might happen next year, and we look for your support in a collaborative process. That means each and every group to participate as we move forward, because it's important for our fishery and, once again, for the quality of life in Falmouth. Thank you very much, all of you, for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, all.
Thanks, George. Appreciate it. Okay, next up would be the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple items. Just summarizing, this past Wednesday evening, I was pleased to join Beach Superintendent Don Hofer and members of the Beach Committee for gathering at Seacrest to congratulate and thank all of the town's seasonal beach staff, including parking attendants, lifeguards, maintenance personnel, clerical, supervisory personnel for a very successful summer 2012 season. Obviously, it's not quite concluded, but I was very pleased to join Don and others in expressing our thanks to our many seasonal employees that really do an extraordinary job for us. Also, on Monday afternoon of this past week, I was pleased to participate in a discussion at the Woods Hole Community Center of issues regarding a proposed undergrounding of electrical utilities in the Woods Hole area. It was organized by Beth Colt of the Woods Hole Inn, and included a number of representatives of Woods Hole businesses and organizations. Concept is yet in its early stages of discussion, and we will, of course, continue to monitor that process. Also, as the board is aware, the 40th running of the Falmouth Road Race occurred on Sunday, August 12th, and was a, yet another success. This running occurred since the board's last regular meeting. I understand that approximately 12,800 runners participated on a day which, as we all know, began with rain, cleared and became, became quite humid prior to the end of the seven-mile race. Stephanie and I were able to review the starting line of the race in Woods Hole, much of the race course, the command post and the heights, and the race finish line early on Sunday morning. My compliments and congratulations to all involved in a highly professional, highly complex event, including the multitude of volunteers who ensured a very successful event. As an update, I want to advise the board that I've executed the cover letter and related items to finalize the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, which the board recently affirmed with some narrative changes. The final narrative changes reviewed and approved by Board Chairman Kevin Murphy and I, along with the necessary number of updated plan copies for transmittal, are awaiting printing and compilation. I have been advised at the official transmittal of the revised updated plan to the State Department of In... of Environmental Protection and other entities will be occurring yet this month. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions on the Town Manager's Report? We'll open it up to individual selectmen reports. Anybody? I can, well, I've just started off. I had an opportunity after the road race to drive around town and look at the effects of road race on the community. There were some areas that, specifically because of the rain, and we probably have the town manager address that one, would be the Falmouth Heights Ball Field that did take a little bit of abuse. And I believe the road race committee themselves has been working diligently to repair that, the damage at the Falmouth Heights. As a matter of fact, they went into action that following week to sod that particular area. I know that I drove around specific neighborhoods that have been drastically affected in the past. They appeared to be very well-maintained after the race, picked up. But of course, the devil will be in the detail finding out how those particular neighborhoods were affected during the race. I also had an opportunity to meet with Selectman Bragger, and we reviewed a LIP application this past week, and I think you'll see that come forward to the Board of Selectmen on a Friendly 40B, as well as the town manager and I have had an opportunity to somewhat be involved. Woods Hole Drawbridge has experienced some problems, being shut down for some periods of time. And I know that the town manager and the Department of Public Works and the company that maintains it are working actively to make sure that it's reliable. And I appreciate all those folks who called and had input to make sure that I pass that information on to the town manager. Also, I think it's important to note that I received a few phone calls from folks in regard to Stony Beach, which is owned by the Marine Biological Laboratories, but has always been staffed and maintained by the town of Falmouth. The Marine Biological Laboratories is actively pursuing the possibility of selling the property, so I think this board will be made aware of that as the time moves forward. Okay, any other individual reports? Doug?
On this Stony Beach, I think the beach itself is owned by the town. It's the parking lot and tennis courts next to it that are owned by MBL that they're considering selling, but they can't sell the beach. And on the road race, I'm very happy to hear about the Heights ballpark, having walked on it at the end of the race, which I did finish, I told everyone about that. I was concerned as to about that. I'm thrilled you had the road races to take advantage of, taking care of that. I noticed a good deal more fencing put up in the town of Woods Hole to really isolate the runners from the private property. I think that made a huge difference in the people living in Woods Hole.
That's great. Anybody else? Brett?
Well, I just wanted to mention that the Charter Review Committee is meeting this Wednesday at 4:30, and they've invited us to attend. And I read an email that Julian can't attend, and I can't attend. So, and I think this is kind of their wrap-up, but they might have another meeting, perhaps, if we request it.
I'm going to try to be there.
You're going to try and be there.
Because I know they're going to have a public meeting on the 30th.
On the 30th?
Into the library.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. That's good. The other thing I wanted to mention was, some of you may know that when the current state treasurer became the treasurer, Steve Grossman, he became aware of the fact that the state's money was sitting in banks, like large banks, like Bank of America, Chase Bank, you know, Lehman Brothers and all of that, overseas. And he thought that they should take a certain percentage of the state money and invest it in community banks in Massachusetts. And they have done that on the Cape. Bank of Cape Cod, which is now in Falmouth, is one of those banks, and also the Cape Cod Five. And I happened to be at a little celebration today in North Falmouth, because I only heard about it yesterday, where one of our own local businesses, which is Little Kids in North Falmouth, the gummos, the parents have just sold their business and the property to their daughter and son-in-law, and they were able to receive a loan from the Cape Cod Five from that money that was invested in their bank by the state. Apparently, the way it works is the state puts in $5 million at first, and then that money can be given out by the bank in loans. And then when that's gone, there's another $5 million, there's a cap of $10 million to the community bank. And so the treasurer was there, and Dorothy Savory, who's president of the Cape Cod Five, and Steve Spitz, who's from the local Cape Cod Five. So it was a really nice event and really focusing the fact that the state can actually do something that affects people at the local level. Anyway, so I thought it was nice. The other thing I want to tell you is I had an amazing experience today. There is, has been a pothole in front of my driveway, which is a state road, Route 28A, and the pothole is actually on the inside of the fog line, which makes it in the travel lane. And lately, pickup trucks who've been pulling boats and landscapers who pull their wide loads with all their equipment go over that. And as they've been going over it for the summer, the pothole has been getting bigger and bigger, and the concern of mine has been getting greater and greater. The noise, it's not bothersome, it's the fact that somebody's going to get hurt. And today, a pickup truck from a local business went over it and hit it so hard, the equipment fell off the back of the truck. And so anyway, I got the number from the state, from our DPW, and called them at 11 o'clock and explained it to them, just like that, here's my name, this is where I live, and this is the story, and I'm concerned about the public safety of people who drive on 28A. And by 3 o'clock, the pothole was fixed. Can you believe that? I mean, can you imagine? 11:00 in the morning, he said, "We will have someone down there to take a look at it," and before 3 o'clock, it was all repaired. So I just thought that was pretty amazing, to think that state government can be that responsive to a pothole in the town of Falmouth. Isn't that great? So I thought that was worth telling the tale.
Okay, anybody else?
Just a couple of things. We have the liaison policy, and hopefully we'll see that on the agenda this coming week. The other thing that I've asked to have on the agenda, and hopefully, again, this coming week, will be the review of the high school project. It actually turns out, and I think an RFQ is, what the maximum value of that is $25,000, am I correct? No? Yes?
Value of?
I know there was some limit to, a minimum limit, if you had to put something out to bid.
From procurement standpoint?
Yes.
We can clarify that?
Interestingly enough, of course, we'd, earlier in the spring, been talking about what would it cost to do this follow-up review of the high school project, and the number $50,000 was floated, but the quote we got from one particular company, an unsolicited quote, was $15,000 plus expenses, which I can't imagine would amount to more than a few thousand dollars. So it looks like it could be done for under $20. And again, I would like to see that on the agenda for the coming weeks, that we can discuss it.
Anybody else? I'd be happy to put them on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Motion to the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I like both. I just have a, thank you.
Great.
Landucci Italia, 824 Main Street, Falmouth.